All right, I want to call the public hearing for petition for rezoning. Uh, nineteen dash three point zero dash zero five point zero dash two dash zero zero three dash zero one three point zero one. Uh, Monday, April twenty second, twenty twenty four, six P M. to order.
That was a lot.
I'll take a roll call. Counselperson Bradley. Counselperson Kemper. Counselperson Ginever. Counselperson Friedmeyer. Counselperson Fisher. Counselperson Schomburg. Counselperson Winkelman. Counselperson Massa. All right, at this time, I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you. Does anyone in the public have any questions or concerns or comments? All right. Does any of the council have any questions? Uh, P and Z passed this unanimously in the previous, in the, in the March meeting.
Has it always been, uh, zoned RP?
No, it was not. It was not zoned RP one. It was actually zoned, uh, residential, the same as the, those other ones to the south of it there. But at some point in time, and there's, depending on where we catch the, the filings on it, it was actually, uh, considered both ways, um, some of which apparently maybe didn't make it fully through council, um, because there was death in the family. Uh, but it ended up being RP one, changed from residential to RP one. Then they came back and said, no, we don't want to do RP one, wanted to change it to the same commercial district that we're doing now. Um, but I, I can't confirm that that's made it through council. So this is kind of where I'm at. Thank you.
How many houses on Missouri Avenue did it stop?
Uh, four total. One's rental, the one right next to the property.
Shaded?
Yeah, the shaded district rental house. Um, the rest, I think, are all individual, or all of one of them are individually owned. And, and the fact on the other end where the old gas station was, the prime building there, there's two houses, one is gone, that's, that's tore down already. All three of those lots are commercial as well on that end, right? And they're owned by, uh, you know, uh, the ones that own the buildings, I probably checked right.
But that C more property is making commercials, being a commercial.
It used to be a, um, Bill Salad yard.
Yes. Junkyard.
But that is a commercial lot. Like, as of right now, it, it's already zoned commercial, so this one touching it. The P and Z was comfortable, it was a unanimous vote to approve, to change this rezoning.
So basically, on that side of the street, there's only, without going across to the cemetery, there's only one residential lot touching. That touches it, correct.
And those neighbors are okay with it?
Uh, all those people were notified, and we had a good turnout at planning and zoning, uh, for the meeting. And, um, once we answered all their questions and, um, with what's coming up next, there was a lot of questions. And that's going to be part of this property as well. Um, when we answered all their questions, they seem, all seem satisfied, I believe. And that's why the P and Z made a unanimous vote. I think you want me to address some of their questions for the council? Uh, if it's related to zoning, I wouldn't go anything past zoning. Zoning before was a residential. They changed it to, in about two thousand eight, they changed it to that RP one, and they were going to put ten townhouses on it. Uh, attached would be two or three, and it kind of worked out to where that's there. Um, that's when they came back and tried to get it changed, they were going- Just, so there won't be a road, or there won't be any access off of Missouri Avenue at all. Uh, that street's too busy. The second busiest side's Truman, you know, to where, but it'll just be a fence there.
We'll get to all that. All right, so that's just for rezoning. So, anything further, sir? All right. Any more questions from the council? All right, at this time, with no more discussion, the public hearing for petition for rezoning this, uh, parcel is now closed. All right, we'll do the next public hearing. I want to call the public hearing for the petition for this parcel in front of you to order on Monday, April twenty second, twenty twenty four, uh, six ten. Uh, I'll take roll call for the council and attendants, and this is for conditional use approval. Counselperson Bradley. Counselperson Kemper. Counselperson Ginever. Counselperson Friedmeyer. Counselperson Fisher. Counselperson Schomburg. Counselperson Winkelman. Counselperson Massa. All right, that's our second public hearing for the conditional use, and Mr. Sullivan, you have the floor.
As the mayor said, it's a conditional use on this piece of property if the council votes yes to rezone the property. So if the property is rezoned to the C two district, a special use permit is required, required to obtain storage unit building facilities. Uh, Mr. Jeff Kemper has, has applied for such request. Uh, if you look at the subject red property, uh, record has twelve twenty four off Truman Boulevard. That is his current storage facility property. Uh, right behind that, that last building there, um, in that red corner is where he is planning on putting, uh, the subject building requested. So one storage building, uh, going in that upper northeast corner next to Missouri Street, again, no access.
Um, your conditions is on the very front page of ordinance nineteen fifty-two, if you guys want to look at that. It's at the bottom of the page, and it, it runs down your, the conditional use, if you want to look at those.
Um, other than that, um, unless Mr. Kemper has anything to add, that's.
Does council have any questions? Do you want any audience to have any questions on that?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to expand a little bit on the, the vegetative buffer. Uh, is there, is there a dimension about that, how, how big of a buffer it is? Is it six feet or something?
Uh, it's not, it's not necessarily, uh, labeled as per, uh, an actual dimension. Um, it's really to, so when the, when the vegetation is mature, that maturity essentially grows together to kind of give up a block view of the property. So you may see plantings out there right off the bat that may have a more significant gap in it, but the goal is so that it kind of comes together. It doesn't get full blocking so that people can still kind of see in there because the neighbors want to. They won't be able to see their, in case there's somebody there doing something that shouldn't be.
Okay. Uh, and, and all these conditions, um, did any of them come out of the ordinances at all? Or, um, you just kind of made them up just to be neighborly, I guess, huh?
Most of those came directly from the previous conditions that were placed on, on the twelve twenty four.
Okay, yeah.
We've, we've added, we've added that vegetarian buffer, we've added no access off Missouri, uh, except for certain conditions. Uh, and then we, we, the lighting, essentially the lighting's already in the ordinance that it can't shine off the property. So that's really kind of one of them that's in the ordinance there.
No, it was, good questions. All right, was nobody has anything else? Yes, sir.
To the rest of the property, the core of the building is, and that will all have hard surface, will the rest of that property also have hard surface, or?
At this, that, right now, no. Just the one building that'll be, you know, right behind the-
The existing building.
Right, and it'll have solid surface around it. Um, so at, at this time, yeah, just the one building and the rest of it. Especially up to the other end will be draft, just like it is, all cut draft. I may think of it there, but in the end, I made sense it over a little more, you know, just from there, but yeah, yeah, all, all solid surface from there. And that buffer goes where this fence goes. So if that fence ends up moving later on down the road, that buffer moves. And, and the other thing is any changes that he makes, so if, if, you know, everything works out great and, you know, a year from now, six months from now, wherever the timeframe might be, that he wants to do another building, he has to come before planning and zoning and council again to do another special use.
But it's zoned, he doesn't have to rezone.
Yeah, he doesn't have to re- I mean, right now, there's a dedicated strip that's five feet along Missouri Avenue for sidewalk, or that's what we're-
If the grant, yeah.
We're trying to get a grant, but that's, so we then talked about, at, at that time, I was putting the fence, or proposed fence, right where the five feet was. Well, we talked about moving it back a foot and, and having a couple of feet wide area for the green space and all of the dead trees or whatever through there. Um, I'm not sure, we talked about only having a four-foot handicap, I think it's got to be five sidewalk.
Yeah.
They're between five and six, I don't remember if five is-
But we can't have a handicap, maybe a compliance that's four foot, that's family.
It's got to be five.
So I may have to move back another-
Bump it.
Any part that I move the fence back, it shrinks up the drive line, so that's, um, but anyway, we talked about that, and, and that'll, that'll be there all of Missouri Avenue, so. Like, where, to where it's been, so.
All right. Anything else? All right. At this time, with no more discussion, the public hearing for petition for conditional use of said parcel is now closed. All right. I'll go ahead and call the regular council meeting for Crystal City for April twenty second, twenty twenty four, to order. Everyone please rise for a pledge of allegiance led by Counselperson Kemper.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, I'll take roll one more time. Counselperson Bradley. Counselperson Kemper. Counselperson Ginever. Counselperson Friedmeyer. Counselperson Fisher. Counselperson Schomburg. Still gone. Counselperson Winkelman. Counselperson Massa. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda for April twenty second, twenty twenty four. All right, I have a motion and second. Any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Madam clerk, has the agenda been posted, dated, and signed? All right. Once you guys had a minute to look at the minutes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for March twenty fifth, twenty twenty four.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
All right, I have a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Public comment is for anything pertaining to last meetings. Anyone in the audience have anything from the last meeting? None? All right. Check register and bills. Give you a minute to look over those. I'd like you to look at the sales tax revenue on some of those. And, um, last month, we're headed in a, a great direction. And, um, I was talking to Mr. Eisenbach earlier about our financials, and on our last year's budget, uh, we ended up pretty good on that. And I'm pretty happy with how that all goes, and, uh, if everything plays out right, we'll be putting a little in savings, so. But anybody have any questions on any of the bills or revenues? All right. I have a motion and second? I know. We did, Mr. Brad, yeah, Mr. Bradley left his glasses, so. He, you know, we're, it's okay. We'll forgive you. Whoa. I know, it, it's okay. All right, so I have a motion and second. Any discussion on those? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Committee reports are in your packet. Uh, Mr. Turner, you have anything to add to your packet?
Uh, no, no, we're, we're moving right along. We did submit to Spencer today on the alternates for the alleyway, so I'm waiting here back from there. So middle of next week is thinking, so.
All right, uh, you want to fill the council in on that, like, our overall road, road budget? They don't know.
Yep, so, uh, we did do our- Streets in that areas, they use a little bit more money and get a little more stuff done.
Where's Spinton Alley? Where's the front?
They are from Spinton, up on Telegraph.
How, how close were the bids, because I guess that, uh?
They were fairly close, except for the one was really, really high, and then Jokers did not show up to submit a bid, so.
Jokers broke.
It was basically between Spencer and, I'm trying to think, four contracting, or there was three, there's three. It might have been four contracting, the other close, and then, I can't think of the top of my head.
I don't think so. One was, uh, yeah. Um, I would like to point out, this is one of the first ones that Turner's wrote, and Mr. Eisenbach, they kind of handled it on their own instead of running through another company to save about eighty thousand dollars. So that's why these, more roads are getting done, alleys are getting done by just internal work, so, uh, Mr. Turner, thank you for that. It's a good job. Yeah, it's, it's going to be good, so. Right. Right, well, and then they would charge us for traffic control, which is, you know, that's one of the things that we can handle, it's a city street, so. Right. All right, thanks, sir. Uh, Mr. Bobas, information is in there, he's very busy. Um, Chief, uh, Mr. Sullivan, you have anything you'd like to add? Very detailed as well on that, you guys are busy, appreciate that. And Chief Helms, you have anything to add to yours? Anybody have any questions for him? All right, moving on to council liaison reports. Uh, Counselperson Fisher, library school board. All right. Uh, Ms. Schomburg is gone with the park. I know the park is busy, they're installing a slide and, uh, for, new slide for the pool. They're fully staffed, uh, park's in pretty good shape, looking good. Vicki White has all the trees gone, and, uh, there, there might be a trunk or something left down there, but our city guys will pull that out. And, uh, they're, we have a start date on when Jokers-
It should be around beginning of May, I just mailed one day last week, because I, I want to have, uh, I'm telling you to have, you know, a family there, plus the council, park board, uh, get the paper all ready. So I would say, they were shooting for beginning of May, but then we've had some up and down temperatures, uh, so kind of put it behind a little bit, so, some time in May.
Yeah, I think they're finished.
I talked about last, it was last week, um, they were shooting for second, first second week, so.
I think they're supposed to be finished by August. Yeah. All right. Counselperson Friedmeyer, planning the zoning?
Meeting on May second.
May second.
All right. And Counselperson Ginever, zoning appeals, we have anything?
Um, there's no meetings, right, Mr. Sullivan? Yeah, yeah, nothing.
All right. Uh, moving on. Uh, public response, that pertains to the other meeting as well. So I don't think we had anything on that. Moving on to old business, I have none. New business, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the election results from April second, twenty twenty four. I have a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We'll go ahead and swear in our newly elected officials, uh, Mr. Jeff Kemper, Mr. Ken Bradley, Mr. Rick Fisher, and Ms. Schomburg will need to be sworn in at the next meeting, I guess, so. All right, uh, shall I, or, sorry? Oh, yeah, you are, I'm sorry, Mr. Cherry. I don't think I have you down there. You're, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, because you're, yeah, Mr. Friedmeyer needs one, yeah. I left you one, and I left Cherry one. All right, thank you, guys. All right, that takes care of our new business. We'll move on to ordinances and resolution. I'll entertain a motion to read, to read bill nineteen fifty dash twenty twenty four on its first reading by title only. I have a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Madam clerk, can I have the first reading of bill nineteen fifty dash twenty twenty four by title only, please?
In ordinance of the city of Crystal City, Missouri, the city authorizing the mayor, Mike Osher, to enter into a grant agreement between the city and James Hardy Building Products, Inc., Hardy, for the use of grant funds related to industrial site development projects, and authorizing the city administrator or his designated to take all actions necessary to implement the grant agreement.
Make a motion to read bill, so.
To accept bill. You just accept bill.
I make a motion to accept the bill, fif- nineteen fifty dash two twenty, two thousand twenty-four on its first reading.
Perfect. A motion has been made and seconded to accept bill nineteen fifty dash twenty twenty four on its first reading by title only. Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Make a motion to read the bill on its second reading by title only.
I'll make a motion to read the bill number nineteen fifty dash two thousand and twenty-four on its second reading by title only.
All right, I have a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam clerk, can I have the second and final reading of bill nineteen fifty dash twenty twenty four by title only, please?
Bill number nineteen fifty dash twenty twenty-four on its second and final reading by title only. In ordinance of the city of Crystal City, Missouri, the city authorizing the mayor, Mike Osher, to enter into a grant agreement between the city and James Hardy Building Products, Inc., Hardy, for the use of grant funds related to industrial site development projects, and authorizing the city administrator or his designated to take all actions necessary to implement the grant agreement.
Thank you, ma'am.
I need to make a motion to approve, um, bill nineteen fifty dash two thousand twenty-four.
All right, a motion has been made and seconded to approve bill nineteen fifty dash twenty twenty four on its second and final reading by title only. Any questions or discussion on this one?
So this is an industrial grant that we awarded last September, I think, uh, for site development work.
On those, the P and Z went through that thoroughly. It was quite a meeting. I think everybody there was very happy with it, so. All right, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the second and final reading of Bill nineteen fifty-two dash twenty twenty-four by title only, please?
Bill number nineteen fifty-two dash twenty twenty-four on its second and final reading by title only. An ordinance to the city of Crystal City, Missouri approving a conditional use on certain tracts of land located within the city limits of the city of Crystal City, Missouri, the city.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to accept Bill nineteen fifty-two dash two thousand and twenty-four on second and final reading.
Excellent. A motion has been made and seconded to approve Bill nineteen fifty-two dash twenty twenty-four on its second and final reading by title only. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I'll poll the council. Councilperson Bradley? Councilperson Kemfer abstain. Perfect. Councilperson Geneva? Councilperson Friedmeyer? Councilperson Fisher? Councilperson Winkelman? Councilperson Massa? All right, bill number nineteen fifty-two dash twenty twenty-four now becomes ordinance nineteen fifty-two dash twenty twenty-four. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? All right, thank you very much. Uh, the next one is our paving. And I'll entertain a motion to read Bill nineteen fifty-three dash twenty twenty-four on its first reading by title only. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the first reading of Bill nineteen fifty-three dash twenty twenty-four by title only, please?
Bill number nineteen fifty-three dash twenty twenty-four on its first reading by title only. An ordinance to the city of Crystal City, Missouri authorizing the mayor, Mike Osher, to enter into a contract with Spencer Contracting Company for three hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty cents for the twenty twenty-four asphalt overlay base bid plus alternatives one, two, and three.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to accept Bill nineteen fifty-three dash two thousand and twenty-four on its first reading by title only.
Perfect. A motion has been made and seconded to accept Bill nineteen fifty-three dash twenty twenty-four on its first reading by title only. Any discussion? The yellow, yeah, it was in the bud.
And then also in this case, those, who the other bidders were, so we can actually look at and see how closer they were.
I can send you the bid.
Yeah.
If you want those streets.
I would, yeah, they were, the roads were, I'd like to see if those were. Not being partial, but I just need to give some of that Chris Bass's area, which was in a couple thousand bucks, to spend their money here locally.
Usually within five to a hundred thousand anymore. I mean, there's nothing really within a hundred dollars to a thousand dollars on the street.
Well, they can make, I mean, that's an easy request of, you get us to... You, on the next jobs or anything like that, make sure we get the bid tabs and then the council. And then the streets, we can email. I mean, that's in our budget thing, but... Yeah.
But then, that also, uh, I'm gonna abstain from voting. Spencer Contracting is my brothers-in-law's business, but my nephew and niece now run, so.
Well, that's why you knew where it was. Nobody else did.
I've been there twice.
Okay.
Any idea why Joker did?
Yeah.
They forgot?
They forgot?
They, so, they, I went to the middle of the county. And Dan handled this one here. And I sat next to Rick Nicole, and they were sick. They couldn't believe they forgot. They said, are you sure? And I said, that's why I'm here. And they didn't look crystal. So they just told me that.
Cause they do good work. I mean, they do good work.
Yeah, cause there was a mandatory free bid. I wanted everybody to be on the same page, because we're the same bid.
All right. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Any motion and a second?
I'd like to make a motion to read Bill nineteen fifty-three dash two thousand and twenty-four on the second and final reading by title only.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the second and final reading of Bill nineteen fifty-three dash twenty twenty-four by title only, please?
Bill number nineteen fifty-three dash twenty twenty-four on its second and final reading by title only. An ordinance to the city of Crystal City, Missouri authorizing the mayor, Mike Osher, to enter into a contract with Spencer Contracting Company for three hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty cents for the twenty twenty-four asphalt overlay base bid plus alternatives one, two, and three.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to accept Bill number nineteen fifty-three dash two thousand and twenty-four on the second and final reading by title only.
All right, a motion has been made and seconded to approve Bill nineteen fifty-three dash twenty twenty-four on its second and final reading by title only. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I'll poll the, yep, I'll poll the council. Councilperson Bradley? Councilperson Kemfer? Councilperson Geneva? Councilperson Friedmeyer? Councilperson Fisher? Councilperson Winkelman? Councilperson Massa? All right, bill number nineteen fifty-three dash twenty twenty-four now becomes ordinance nineteen fifty-three twenty twenty-four. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? All right. Thank you, ma'am. All right, moving on to city administrators' report. We got a couple of, uh, items we need to vote on in there. I might use this. I lost mine. Uh, we have a discussion. Oh, Mr. Eisenbach, the other floor.
We, we have two meetings that will have to move the dates up. The next one is in May because of the later days, the more days, the holidays. Uh, it's called on our meeting night, only May twenty-seventh to May twentieth, um, December twenty-third, uh, to December fifteenth.
Perfect. I'll entertain a motion to move the main meeting and the December meeting.
Some move?
Sure.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Uh, the second thing is, um, in relation to Mr. Kemfer, uh, starting on his, um, developing his lot. We're under contract with Cochran, uh, when he quit before that grant, which included some stormwater, uh, uh, work. So I'd like permission to move forward with, to allow Cochran to start another stormwater study on how to get rid of this, the stormwater. That picture really doesn't show it, but probably, let's, let's just call it the middle, that's all over. I think it's a little more to the north. There's a curb cut that they put in when we redid that, I think in two thousand, nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand. Uh, and so all the stormwater that comes off the cemetery, off both ends of Missouri, uh, is diverted through Mr. Kemfer's property. So we need to have him there out, because we can't just put pipe in the ground and send it to, uh, the highway, which is where it's gonna go basically. So I'm just looking for permission, permission to allow, um, Cochran. It's the bad leak resistance. We got Mr. Kemfer's done a lot of work when he was putting the, um, original, the original buildings in, uh, along with, I think, Class D as well. Put some rip rite in the ditch, put some retaining molds out. But this is, this is all the stormwater that is currently going, well, which will kind of ente what he's trying to do, basically. So we're gonna have to do something with stormwater.
And we've met with an attorney, or our attorney, just to make sure, like, hey, we're doing everything that we need to do, and it is our responsibility. Because we cut the, yeah, we cut the curve and...
And most likely, I'll be giving the city easement to put storm drains through the middle of the property to get it down the motor.
You need a motion to approve that.
Just allow them to do the stormwater study. And they'll, they'll do the study and just see what type of fights, if there's intention based on needed.
And we're already under contract with them for that grant, so.
We won't know if we get the grant till the end of the summer. If, if we don't, we'll probably put it in for it again, because it's a massive project. It will be sidewalk, so we have to departments, uh, but this will give us, we have to do something here. So this is just gonna allow them to do the stormwater study. So they'll come and tell us in thirty or fifty days.
No, it's our issue, so we need to fix it.
I'll make a motion, let Jason and Cochran do what they gotta do on stormwater.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Um, all right, does anybody have any other questions on the admin report?
Jason, on the render roads, are they identical? So if we went to one, you wouldn't have to go to the other, or?
No, so the ones, uh, that's the X and R seven is going to be more focused on that end of the project. They have some ideas for River Seana and sixty-one intersection, I guess. Um, and then, uh, VFW will be more for phase two, which will be VFW drive, same pipes intersection, all that into there. So it's kind of two separate projects.
Are you going to both of the meetings, Jason? Okay.
So VFW drive won't be started for a while?
No, it's still being engineered. I would say, um, you know when they're gonna do that, because they haven't really said. I would say within the next thirty to sixty days.
They're closing VFW to do it, right?
They're going to have to at some point, because they're gonna raise that road. So there's, there's a lot that's still worked out.
There's, there's some places that work, and it was like...
Yeah. So they're, they're gonna have to go the back way through, but they have to get...
So they're, you're gonna have to go down Airport Road to get some cords for a while?
I don't know if you go down Airport, if you go to industrial through, it'll be a little, it's a pity how they do it, but I, I don't know.
That's better than Airport.
The phase one work, I think you'll see within thirty days starts. The Airport Road and Castle Acres will start, like, they say that they may first or something, start there.
Did we ever figure out VFW is sanitary sewer line?
No. It's not down the middle, definitely.
No, my, we just got, they still found it?
Yeah, they're gonna have to do a test board. Um, we flamed off all that last weekend in a meeting, so yep, they gotta go.
Well, still on that.
I mean...
There's nothing that goes up that road. Everything we have goes left down County or out for five, so I don't know, go down, get to the drive.
All right. Anything else for Mr. Eisenbach? All right. Moves on to mayor's report. Um, I'll open up the floor for nominations for Mayor Pro Ten. Our last one was Mr. Bradley. You didn't like that? You... I don't miss too often when there's a conflict, but if anybody opens it up...
I'll nominate Ken Bradley.
Here we go. Hey, that works. All right, is anybody else? Okay. He, he does fine. No, it's... I think, I think it's fine. Yeah. All right, um, I just need a motion and a second and all that, all right. I'll entertain, I have a motion, yeah, I need a motion to approve Ken Bradley. For Mayor Pro Ten. All right, I have a motion and a second to approve Mayor Pro Ten Bradley. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, congratulations, Mr. Bradley. All right, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Shelley Andrews as city clerk as well. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Kind of odd that we have to appoint her each time. I know, state statue. Mr. Bradley, Shelley will buy you an extra pair of glasses, I guarantee it. Just, they will fit, they will... All right, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. The next piece we're gonna do in one swoop here. I'll entertain a motion, uh, for the council committee appointments. And I thought our last year went pretty well, so I kept them all the same. Finance Committee, Mr. Friedmeyer. City in Building, Ms. Massa. Police Committee, Ms. Homburg. Public Welfare and Fire, Mr. Fisher. Street Committee, Mr. Bradley. Annexation Committee, Mr. Kemfer. Water Committee, Mr. Winkelman. And Labor Relations, Mr. Geneva.
Sure of anybody not wanting to be on mayor committee, I make a motion to accept the mayor's request.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Uh, continuing on the mayor's report, uh, last meeting, we had a discussion, uh, Jack brought up about opening up the floor for public comment for the actual meeting. Uh, at this time, if anyone in the, in the audience, uh, would like to speak on anything pertaining to city business. If you raise your hand. Ms. Ryaney, you have two minutes. You may approach. I got us at a time limit on it. Yeah, but it's already taken. That's, it's a minute forty-five now.
My annual attending meeting to make a complaint.
Okay.
Okay, um, in the oldest city, part of the city where I live, the sidewalks should have been installed probably in nineteen sixty, they're crumbling. I, I know I approached Mr. Turner about it, and, and during the time when Chief LaCray was in, he talked about it too, in reference to, uh, they supposedly had a list that was going on at that time where the residents had to sign up. Well, Mr. Turner said there was no such list when he got to his position. And I can believe that, but anyway, uh, I approached him about sidewalks on me. There's no way, they know the people that have stumbled over parts of it, you know, the older people, especially when they're coming to our church. It's embarrassing when we have our town coming to church and seeing that. Um, I noticed that you showed me that two oh four Olive was going to get her sidewalk. She was there, uh, she's been there almost thirteen years.
Okay.
And she has been approaching the city to get her sidewalks fixed. And when Ms. Austin lived on Olive Two, the city made an attempt to fix it a little bit because water was running down in her basement. Uh, there's a section on High and Olive where the curb...
I do know that our ADA ramps are focused on most of those areas. Is that...
Intersections from Mississippi Avenue South and, and Hamilton.
Right.
All the sidewalk intersection are ADA ramps and then...
So the ADA, so the ramps are gonna go in there and then they will probably... Why are we putting a curb?
On a bad sidewalk.
Under federal law, we have to put a...
And you got, no, she's asking, well, I asked a couple of years ago, why put a nice ADA ramp? If you hit on the ramp, then you can't put on a sidewalk.
No, and that's what we're gonna start approaching and fixing that.
Cause it's, it's really bad. And then, like I said, I've asked over and over again to look at this. We've had meetings before when I came to a public meeting thinking I had a chance to speak on it, and you know, you made the determination of what's gonna be done, so. I, and that's the same way, that's the reason I'm here today, because I got the little mirrors letter showing what sidewalks are gonna be done. And no, those streets were included, and they're really, I mean, knowing what sidewalks are included, and it's really bad.
Well, no, we appreciate you coming in and letting us know, and we'll have Mr. Turner look into that, and, uh, we'll go from there, and I'll keep in touch.
Okay, I like the Lord looking to that, I've heard that.
I know, we'll follow through, though. I'll have an answer for it. I know where, I know where you live. All right, thank you.
I gotta agree with Ms. Ryaney, if that means us not doing a ramp somewhere, we gotta put something on the other to finish a complete sidewalk. I'd rather not do one ramp here and do a whole sidewalk somewhere else. Uh, it's not just in Ward One, there's other...
No, it's all over, and we, and, and... And honestly...
But like, like she said, like I said, it doesn't really good putting a ramp in a, a sidewalk that's on one.
No, I agree with you. We have to do the ramps, but we'll be able to now with the finances, the city, I mean, we're in a really good spot right now to actually start looking at that and actually having a list, not just saying we have a list. Getting through it and saying, hey, this is what we got, so I, I...
And there was a list, just where that last night, I remember.
Right.
There was, yeah, I remember a little.
Oh, yeah, hopefully, maybe more than it's just...
All right, anybody else? All right, that's all I have is the mayor's report. Um... Roundtable. Councilperson Bradley?
I don't have anyone. I do, Little League baseball, opening day, appreciate the police coming down, been a little S for. I have not seen so many kids in years down there. They got, uh, I guess, Little League's coming back, like, people, parents are getting tired of the travel teams or whatever, but...
Little League?
Lot of kids down there this year, I'm happy to see it.
And after the games, Culvers is packed, and all of our restaurants are. I mean, it's a great thing, that thing being in our town, like, everybody's like, oh, it's just, but those guys coming in, it's a big deal, so I like seeing them. Mr. Kemfer? Mr. Geneva?
Uh, I got something, believe it or not. Um, speaking of Little League, I, um, I got something from somebody today saying that they were, there's, there's little people parked in the grassy areas quite a bit. And, uh, there's like a big hole there that people are falling into and never heard from again. I'm not exactly sure what...
In Crystal, uh, in, on the Little League property?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, well, I guess first of all, who, who's responsible for maintaining that?
Little League. They're the owners, they have a own...
Uh, well, I, I actually went there on the way here, but there was so many cars there, I couldn't tell where it was at, but...
It's, it's their property, like, they have their own board and stuff.
Okay.
We can, we'll take a look tomorrow, because I know there was a spot that either the gas company or something...
Yeah, it just kind of looks like a sinkhole or something, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll, I'm gonna run it down and look at, you know, you sent me a search.
Yeah.
So we're gonna look at that tomorrow as well.
Okay. Yeah, I'll go by there too, when there's not so many cars, and I'll see if I can find it. Yeah, yeah, they sent me a picture, but I couldn't, it, it's, it's kind of between the daycare and the first building there, I think.
Is that building ours? Can we do some, I mean, I know this might not be the place, but that building looks like it needs some help. It needs maybe some paint or something. I was saying, looking at that building, can we, Turner? Something with that building. I guess, I don't know what building, it's just...
The Ozark React Building or something?
Yeah. It was a shocker building.
It was emergency break.
It was the old React building at one time.
And they donated everything to the city, I guess, is what I gather.
Well, I mean, it's a decent building, I mean, it's a timber bar building, if we just paint it maybe, or, or, I don't know. I didn't know it was our building, I was looking at that, I was gonna have a discussion on that building some other time, but... That building's rough looking.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll take a look at it, so I, I wanna move...
All right, Jack.
Sorry, I got just a couple more things. Uh, Shelley helped me out this week, and I, I don't know if anybody's aware of it, but if you forget your password for Outlook, you can't reset it yourself, you actually have to call up, uh...
Forward slash.
Forward slash, yeah, so, and I, I was kind of surprised at that, and I actually asked them why, and they said, you know, it's just a small organization and you don't have an admin, so where are your admin, so... Um, so just in case you're aware of that. And, and then the Girl Scout, I, I just wanted to mention, uh, so you sent those samples up to, um, Metro?
The St. Louis Testing Lab.
St. Louis Testing Lab, and they, they haven't gotten any yet?
They told me Thursday or Friday and said, if I tell you, I'm gonna be wrong, because I was in the middle of moving stuff. But basically, it came back kind of inconclusive to feces, but there's rocks, gravel, they were gonna do some more in-depth studies, testing.
Just to fill everybody in, there was kind of like a black goo coming down from the inside of the building and landing on stuff, so we just kind of assumed it was bad.
So he didn't even get the full report back yet.
Okay. Uh, and I went there, I went in there for something the other day, um, and I don't hear very well. I, I, I heard buzzing, and I went, oh, no, the bees are back. And it was one of those days when it was eighty degrees outside, and there was, there was bees all over the place next to where they used to be. Uh, I've gone back since it got cold again, I haven't seen them, but I, I suspect that they're scouting that area out and probably went in the building there again. I, I'm not exactly sure how to keep them out unless we just, I don't know. I just wanna make you aware of it.
I'm trying not to poke party too much about that.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, but I did ask you one month or two, and I have to, yeah, I'll get back on that, so I'll, I'll, I think...
Yeah, more building maintenance, you need more building maintenance.
I'm not, I don't know about bees, could we get one of that gentleman who did it before, maybe set some traps up, maybe catch bees that were in a nest?
Yeah, yeah, he, he, he said when he did that, that they'd be back. Yeah, we gotta make it so they can't get in there, yeah.
All right, thanks, sir. Councilperson Friedmeyer?
Um, yes, I have something. On, uh, we did discussion of the sidewalks down in Ward One. And we've talked about this before, the street width. When you guys are trying to hash this out, maybe, maybe, uh, some of those streets are so skinny, put a brand-new sidewalk on one side, make it a little bit wider, and just put a curb on the other side, because the par- parking down at some of them streets are really bad. So I think if we make a real nice sidewalk on one side, and then park in the one, and, and maybe park the cars on that one side or whatever, whatever you want to decide, but I think that might be a way, that might save us...
No, that's a good discussion. Thank you, sir. Councilperson Fisher?
I got about twelve things to contribute, and I don't have any...
Great. No, no one's doing that. Councilperson Winkelman?
I just, and I wanted to mention the, the sidewalk as well, and I really appreciate you offering that time to our residents to be able to speak up.
Thank you.
If they have something, I think that's something that the meeting needs, and maybe has missed, and for the, I think, Ms. Ryaney, unannounced, to be able to come in and tell us all about that. Uh, it's really written in the commission for us, you know.
Yep.
Two things, tell us, and the mayor, let you know.
Perfect, all right. Uh, Ms. Massa? Nothing? All right, my last, Mr. Cherry? Thank you, sir. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, the meeting is now adjourned.
I said, here's a kid out, hilarious, the kid out of my room.